The Committee on Health, Land Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Tuesday, November 7, 2023, and the time is 2:02 PM. In compliance of the open government law, notices for these public hearings were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, October 31 and Friday, November 3, 2023. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking begin by stating your name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone's testifying, the committee asks those present to please refrain from moving around within the public hearing room. Additionally, we have asked protocol to keep the doors quiet. Individuals presenting oral testimony are invited to also submit written testimony afterwards in order to ensure their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator who has the floor or at the discretion of the committee chair. After all have testified, senators will be recognized for about five minutes of questioning of the panel or comments on the bill and shall not interrupt any other senators or any person testifying. Additional rounds of questioning may be allowed if we have enough time. The hearing is to collect testimony. Thank you. Berating of any of the witnesses will not be allowed. If you ask a question, please allow them to answer. Agenda items for today are Bill Number 177-37COR, introduced by Joe S. Son Augustine, Roy A. B. Canata, Duane T. D. Sinicolas, William A. Parkinson. It's an act to amend Section 75A 112H of Chapter 75A, Division 2, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the aggregate amount insured by the Guam Chamor Land Trust Commission for the Beneficiary Loan Guarantee Fund. Bill Number 178-37COR, introduced by Joe S. Son Augustine, Roy A. B. Canata, Duane T. D. Sinicolas, William A. Parkinson, is an act to add new sections 75A 126, 75A 127, 75A 128, and 75A 129 to Chapter 75A of Title 21, Division 2, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishment of the Chamor Land Trust Endowment Fund. The third bill on our agenda is Bill Number 126-37COR, introduced by Roy A. B. Canata, William A. Parkinson, Duane T. D. Sinicolas. It's an act to amend Section 61309, Article 3, Chapter 61, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adding temporary workforce housing as a permitted use for M1 light industrial zones. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are present here today, including Senator Joe Son Augustine and Senator Roy Canata. Susus Massey colleagues. And so we'll begin with the first agenda item, which is Bill Number 177. We would like to allow the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As you read the bill, and as we all know, the Chamor Land Trust Commission is responsible for distribution of Chamor homelands pursuant to mandates to address the well-being of the Chamor people. With this being said, CLTC is authorized to provide loan guarantees to leases who qualify for home loans from lenders from local or federal government agencies or instrumentalities or private lending institutions. The Commission found that current statute in Chapter 75A of Division 2, Title 21, does not clarify the amount for which the CLTC guarantees such loans to leases who qualify for loans from the various institutions. The aftermath of Typhoon Ma'warr left numerous families homeless or with unlivable housing structures. Due to the existing statute and the lack of funding at that time, CLTC was unable to provide loan guarantees for these families to move forward with their housing improvements. Although CLTC recently received a cash infusion of $5,600,000, with $600,000 currently in its fund, $1 million appropriate to them from fiscal year 2024 budget, and $4 million given from the governor's ARP fund. This amount only covers the $4 million of loan guarantees needed for families affected by Typhoon Ma'warr. It still leaves CLTC funding inadequate to back the $10,400,000 in loans that it currently have had since the early 2000s. Due to the lack of flexibility within their resources, Bill 177 will establish the aggregate amount of building costs up to 25%. Please understand that it's up to 25, not 25. 25 is not your magic number, it's up to 25. It could be less if CLTC chooses to go less. CLTC may guarantee loans for leases. This amendment will enable CLTC not only have flexibility with their limited resources, but to also leverage them to fund the loan guarantees. This proposed legislation will allow CLTC to provide loan guarantees estimating from $22 million to $122 million for future homes being built. Therefore, this will empower the families impacted by Typhoon Ma'warr and other families utilizing this program to begin building and creating a safe and healthy living environment for their families once again. Madam Speaker, thank you for hearing this bill, and I look forward to the testimonies or feedback that is provided today. Susus Massey. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator, and I'd also like to recognize the presence of our legislative secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton, Susus Massey, Senator. We'll now receive testimony. All of those who signed up who wish to testify, please go ahead and have a seat at the table. I'd also like to recognize the presence of Senator Chris Barnett. Thank you, Senator, for joining us today. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this bill, 177? All right. If not, I'd like to recognize the presence of our Chamor Land Trust Commissioners, Mr. David Herrera, Mr. Earl Garido, Susus Massey for being here, and also our Chamor Land Trust Commission Director, Mr. John Birch, Susus Massey, Mr. Birch for being here. We also have with us our Guam and Central Lands Commission Director, Juan Leguatnia, Susus Massey, Senator for being here, and of course, Mr. Carlos Camacho, ready to testify. Okay, so we'll begin with Bill Number 177. Again, this is relative to establishing the aggregate amount insured by the Guam Chamor Land Trust Commission for the Beneficiary Loan Guarantee Fund. And so I will begin with Mr. Herrera, if you, as a commissioner.
Madam Speaker, Senator Joe, Senator Amanda, Senator Roy, Senator Chris. But I meant that I still Bill 177-37COR, no need for my established aggregate amount insured need for Guam Chamor Land Trust Commission for a beneficiary loan fund.
If audio could just make it a little louder, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. But I've been a clarion, a mother to do, not for a baby, a lover, for a baby, no, in favor, still a bill, a pro managua, no beneficiary loan guarantee. But if you know English, no, many new document to not yet, copy, a committee, a gigantic finance, single, no, not a little some puppet, no, una anu, na, toti, August, na, meeting commission, no, man, what to size, na, total, ni man, go 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 loan guarantee. This is a Brian, ni man, what to size, na, total, no, taz, salapi, no, bah, salapi, lot tres, and two, meet, that, war, that he man, go go go, no loan guarantee, can, that, call look, dos, me. So, back in August, as I mentioned, there was like seven constituents that came to the Chamor Land Trust requesting for loan guarantees. And just by observing the, you know, what was going on, I understood that Chamor Land Trust only had about $300,000. And the, based on public law 75A, Chapter 75A, what the Chamor Land Trust had at that time, the aggregate amount was about $10,400,000. So the $10,400,000 with the amount that was in the bank, which is $300,000, was not sufficient to cover the aggregate to assure the loans that were accumulated for the last 20 years. So generally, what happened on that last 20 years, that out of 100 constituents that applied for SBA, 19 were in default. So out of 19, over 100, we kind of concluded that it was like almost about 20% were in bad loans. So fast forward today, during that August meeting, we requested, and we tried to come to the legislature to request for about $12 million. And we had the response that that wasn't possible. It was a difficult time to provide the $12 million. And we thank you, Madam Speaker, and Senator Joe, and the rest that voted to provide a million dollars to include to have money in the bank for the loan guarantee. And as you noted earlier, there was $4 million that came from Adeluk. So that being said, it was, I'll make it short because we have other speakers to speak. So I am here in favor of Bill Number 177-37, and I thank you for your support in providing that fundings during fiscal year '24. Susus Massey.
Susus Massey, senor. Mr. Director, John Birch, from Chamor Land Trust Commission.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Senator Son Augustine, Secretary Shelton, and Senator Canata, I guess Senator Barnett stepped out. My name is John Birch. I'm the acting administrative director of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. And I'm here to testify in support of Bill 177-37COR, which proposes an amendment to subsection 75A 112H of Chapter 75A, Division 2, Title 21 of the Guam Code Annotated. The bill addresses crucial concerns and seeks to provide necessary improvements to the Chamor Land Trust Commission's loan guarantee program. I recognize the vital role played by the CLTC in supporting leases who qualify for home loans from various lenders. However, the current statute lacks clarity regarding the amount for which the CLTC can guarantee loans, leaving leases uncertain about their eligibility and the support they can expect. This amendment aims to rectify this issue by establishing an aggregate amount for loan guarantees, providing a clear framework for leases and lenders alike. The bill acknowledges the pressing need to address the inadequacy of the CLTC home loan fund in meeting the growing demand for loan guarantees. By allowing the CLTC to leverage its limited resources, it will enable the Commission to fulfill its commitment to assisting deserving families impacted by natural disasters such as Typhoon Ma'warr. Many families affected by the aftermath of Typhoon Ma'warr are still struggling to rebuild their lives and improve their housing conditions. The proposed amendment would empower the CLTC to provide loan guarantees for these families, enabling them to move forward with their housing improvements and regain safe and healthy living environments. Furthermore, the proposed amendment aligns with the overarching objective of safeguarding the CLTC's loan guarantee programs' long-term sustainability and effectiveness. It achieves this by setting a defined percentage for loan guarantees while allowing for adaptability in managing scarce resources. However, I have reservations about the provision that restricts the aggregate amount of building costs to a maximum of 25% as it may impede access to home loans for individuals seeking to fund repairs and construct a house through financial institutions. I commend the effort of the bill's sponsors for their unwavering commitment to improving the lives of our island's residents and families. Susus Massey.
Susus Massey, acting director. Mr. Camacho, or Mr. Leguatnia?
Susus Massey, Madam Speaker. She Ronald Leguatnia do, guy, get you lucky, come on, member, give commission, ni, man, in, at, Guam, and so, lands, low, guy, get you more, come on, tomorrow, para, iman, total, than, a guy, go. Who support this, ti, la, pin, upon, ni, uno, shetty, shetty, tres, shetty, put, resource, a man, is, it, a, iman, total, ta, ad, zudu. Who attended, si, utu, mona, hunta, gi, gi, COTC, da, who, li, if, millia, she, ni, man, stop, a, we. Da, man, is, is, it, a, zudu, po, fan, ma, ha, hat, i, gi, man, ya, piot, gi, durante, ni, ma, zulang, i, pack, zu. So, zah, by, ni, no, yo, don, cool, na, we, de, cemento, senor, Senator Joe Son Augustine, Senator Roy Canata, then, so, lucky, she, Duane, Sinicolas, and Senator Joe Parkinson, Hamzoo, then, so, lucky, senora, who, de, session, a, un, support, this, ti, sa, maulik, this, ti, para, iman, total, ta, man, is, is, it, a, zudu. Stop, a, we, da, da, man, go, 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 a, zudu, i, iman, total, ta, po, fa, man, ha, sa, guma, da, ti, si, ni, i, ma, zulang, guma, ti, nah, hun, is, salapi, lo, esti, gi, come, on, I, and, this, ti, loan, guarantee, ni, na, i, a, zudu. Who, no, yo, wa, in, tre, ga, got, tu, it, ni, gave, gi, zah, go, Speaker, lo, um, hung, on, who, support, this, ti, a, man, is, it, a, salapi, i, Chamor Land Trust, da, esti, gi, gi, gua, esti, lucky, da, ni, uno, shetty, otsu, zah, wa, na, be, ben, a, gi, gi, gua, e, dos, le, i, uno, shetty, otsu, tres, shetty, but, esti, endowment, taz, a, gua, cause, ni, be, dog, gua, esti, al, to, di, dos? Para, wa, pa, de, estea, estea, fin, en, okay, plus, pa, bire, tot, ti, lo, esti, loan, guarantee, a, maulik, esti, na, programa, na, la, na, la, pin, upon, it, da, who, de, session, a, un, a, support, ti, esti, para, iman, total, ta, no, Joe, para, iman, total, ta. Et, gi, min, a, like, to, di, min, a, like, para, iman, total, ta, pata, a, zuda, put, favor, a, zuda, iman, total, ta. Susus Massey.
Susus Massey, lucky, senor. Mr. Camacho?
Madam Speaker, Senator Son Augustine, Amanda Shelton, Senator, Senator Canata. I'm here to support Bill 177. I too have been in the COTC Commission meetings, listening to the Commission members try to come to resolutions on their limited resources and how to help these families. I saw these families, just like the gentleman to my right, who came there and said, "We want to build our home. We're living off canopies and dirt ground. These are real, real families that really need the help." So as I looked at Chapter 75A, because I was from the outside looking in, because actually housing is my background, I looked at the limitation. And again, I'm taking this from the pairings they had. They didn't know if it's for dollar-for-dollar guarantee, they didn't know it was for any percentage guarantee, so it wasn't clear. So when, as the months went by, these families were still waiting, we got creative minds like the Commission members, Mr. Earl Garido, I remember him saying, "So what if we use a 20% value?" And I still remember how he came up with that value, like Commissioner Herrera said. They looked at the 20-year history, and out of the 100 portfolios, they had 19 bad debts. Nothing's perfect, they got some bad debts. So 19 to 100 is about 20%. So they used that number as their formula, and based on that formula, based on the 4 million of Ma'warr, potential applicants of 4 million, if you use the same statistics, 20% of 4 million is $800,000, right? And thanks to Speaker Joe and the rest of the body, the senators, in 2024, you guys gave them a million-dollar seed money for the loan guarantee. Plus, they identified, through the hard work of the COTC staff, they identified they had $600,000 in the account, so 1.6. Then the governor brought in $4 million to assist. At that time, we didn't know the ratio. Again, I'm watching from the outside in, but it was enough for these guys to make a decision to help these 20 families, and there's more out there, to get the loan guarantee so they can proceed. Then when I heard about the formula base, up to 25%, I was just intrigued. Now, when it was up to, and it says you can be flexible, 5% to 5 million, you can give up to $112 million of guarantees. 25% of 5 million, you can give 22 million guarantees. Well, it covered, it covered all the costs. And the reason that's very important is not only the Ma'warr applicants today, you got thousands of recipients there that will one day be building their homes. When, when the funding become available to the Native Veteran Loan Program, and the one you guys, the same senators here are working on the USDA Loan Guarantee Program, when they come into place, and more families come in to get their loan, they're going to need more guarantee. So the flexibility of the up to 25, I'm assuming that that will be plenty enough guarantee for the guarantee to keep moving forward to help these families. So I too here, again, support it for these land trust recipient, so they can at least get that one hiccup when they go to the Commission for approval. And again, the last meeting I saw, and they're still continuing the meeting, because I've been monitoring the meeting, I go to the meetings for other issues, I think they got close to 27 applicants now. When this first started since August, oh, they have a six. Today's 27 of the Ma'warr applicants. And again, thanks to the vision of this body, providing them the seed money so they could provide the aggregate value so they can meet the loan guarantee, I think their opportunity for homeownership, to fulfill their Chamor dream in their property, can come in. So this, you know, there's over, this law's been around a long time, and it took many legislative amendments. Speaker was here when we had the Dave Davis situation. That took us for a two-year setback, but thanks to the Speaker and this body, they came back and amended the law so that it can conform to the Department of Justice concern at that time. And today, now they can move forward. There's two other issues to move, but we'll take it one chapter at a time. And I love to contribute because I am an individual from Guam. I am not a Chamor Land Trust recipient. I did not apply, so I am not in the waiting list for the record. But all these families that I seen, like the gentleman to my right, I feel, I mean, these are real hard-working Chamor families that need to put a roof on their head. I still remember a guy named Mr. Canata, who's a, works for GPA, and he goes out doing Ma'warr to help restore the power. And all he's asking at that time, he said he came down eight times, eight times to get approval, but because of the statute is conflicting, and the board couldn't make a decision because they don't have the flexibility at that time, and this is why you guys are working it, he couldn't get it. Then, I don't know if you guys remember, the last two months, we had a monsoon, rain again. So the guy was getting poured of rain and mud again with his family, and I think this will help these families out there get into the opportunity to get them to a safe and decent home. So I do support 177 in regards to helping these families. Thank you very much.
Susus Massey, Mr. Camacho. I'm glad to see you here and well.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, I first like to recognize Senator Joe Brown for joining us, Susus Massey, Senator. And we'll allow the sponsor to begin on the panel for questions.
Very, actually, no questions for the panel, actually, just a statement, number one. When I introduced this bill, it's similar to what I did with Guam Housing. We allowed the Commission the opportunity to adjust. You, you guys tell us what you need, what flexibility you need. We did that with Guam Housing, now they have the flexibility, they can adjust the loans wherever, wherever they want, and what their amount would be. And I offer the same thing, I only offer this bill as a, for the aggregate, so you have a baseline. Now, the same token, you know, as what the Speaker did during, when we're dealing with a budget, she, she requests for a million dollars. I'm here to tell you that I'm going to support it. She says, "And if you say, can we continue to maintain that seed money on every budget here?" As the budget guy, I'm fully in support of that. And, and the Speaker knows that, and all my colleagues know that. If it's about helping the people of Guam, let's do it. And, and if you say, if you can maintain that seed, even though, even though we have other bills that are going to come up that's going to give you seed money, then we'll, then we'll provide it, but you gotta, you gotta communicate that to us. You gotta write that to us and say, "Hey, not $12 million, I'm being, na, tak, papa, ni, di, ni, me, set, to, kala, mo, a million or two million." I think that there's flexibility there. But with this aggregate amount, if the bill passes, you already have that flexibility. You just need to maintain the seed money because you're going to run out of money where you can give out the loans. So we want to make sure that you're still viable, and that should be the focus. And with that, Madam Speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Son Augustine. I have a few questions, if maybe you can help me to understand. So, first of all, what is the status of the six applicants versus the 27 applicants? Have you acted on any of them?
Yes, we have. Eight have been approved. There were 12 requests that were submitted and discussed at the last board meeting. Because it was an oversight meeting here, I had to leave a bit early, so the staff took care of that, but they were able to approve eight and table four. That means that four were tabled, they're going to come back later on. We still have a few more to go, and a total of 27 applied. One was for a traditional loan, and the 26 were for SBA, for, to recover from the devastation by Typhoon Ma'warr. So we will be taking that up again at the next regular meeting of the CLTC on the 16th of this month. So we hope to be able to go through all of those. And then for the four that were tabled, we hope that they can get their documents in order so we can take up their cause again in the next regular meeting of the CLTC in December. So hopefully, we can take all of them before the year end.
All right. Can you explain how this affects? Can you explain how this affects those applicants who are trying to get a loan from Guam Housing versus those who are trying to get a loan from SBA versus those who are trying to get a loan from private? I think your concern.
Yes, that's, that's my concern because the staff has informed me that they did reach out to various banks and institutions. And the one that came back with positives was Guam Housing Corporation. They're in on this, they're willing to help out. We haven't received anything from SBA or the other banks that we've reached out to. But because of that, I did go online to see, to try to find out what the loan guarantee SBA would agree to. And it's at the standard, it would go as low as 50% to 80%. Not knowing that if they will agree to go as low as this. So we're going to do the best we can with what we have now and take care of the immediate need of these people that, that need to be taken care of. It's a humanitarian effort, and we really appreciate what the legislature has done in getting this through and, and, and trying to assist them with this. I mean, we know that once word gets out that we're going to assist these 27 families, we're going to get more people coming in. So we're hoping that we can accommodate as many as possible. So far, we've, our board has agreed to 20% as part of the aggregate. With the amount, with the eight that has been approved, we went from having an aggregate amount of loans guaranteed at 55%, now that's decreased to 47%. So we can still pick up more people. So, but yeah, that, that's a problem. Right now, we've only got Guam Housing that's committed. We'll try to bring in the others along the way because I know if you go through, if they go through SBA, the interest rates are extremely lower. And that's a concern because they're going to be paying the higher interest rate. And we all know, for those of us who bought houses, cars, or whatever, interest rates make a huge difference in the amount of cash you have in your pocket. And unless we can get Guam Housing to lower their interest rates, Madam Speaker.
All right. So that's concerning to me that we're, so we're only limited right now to Guam Housing because, and you're saying that the 25, saying, putting this cap of 25% may, may not allow you to, to guarantee any SBA loans.
It will limit the, currently, it would limit the opportunity for them to get, to look for loans in other institutions, financial institutions. I, I believe Guam Housing is already committed to this.
Right. But yeah, my concern is the SBA because we had a lot of applicants who called our offices as well, who were approved by SBA, but because of the land ownership.
26 are through SBA of the 27. We'll continue to work on it.
All right. So without the bill, you were able to go, you went up to 20%. That's what you did. You approved.
That's what the Commission, yes, the board.
And so the bill, yeah. So I, I mean, I support this, especially it's going to give you comfort in going forward with the Guam Housing. However, yeah, I just wonder, putting this in statute, right?
Yes.
What signal does that send to SBA? Is there any other SBA solution that, that we can include in here? Is there any potential solution?
I don't have any at this time. I'm fairly new at Chamor Land Trust. And but, you know, we're, I do have experience working with the Guam National Lands Commission in working stuff like this out. But I'd have to see it through on the CLTC side and see how far we can go. We just need time. This bill is moving us in the right direction. We're aware that there's a problem, and we're trying to rectify it. But you're right, I am concerned about the 25% cap.
And, and so if an applicant also goes to a private bank and gets a loan, and you can only guarantee 25%, does that prevent them from moving forward?
Well, it won't prevent them from applying, but the, the private bank may not agree to that.
Right.
Because I know, I've built a house or two, and even if I have a month or two left to make on the final payment, if I don't make that, they will take 100%. You know, they'll take the whole building and property too. So because this is government land, they're not going to go after the property. They would want some cash to be made available for this. But at 20% in our aggregate, we feel that there will be only about, that's assuming there'll be no more than 20% failures, you know, for people to fail to make their commitment, that we should be able to cover that. But will the, the banks accept that? That's another story.
Mr. Herrera, any, any other solution that you have thought of for, for the private loans and for the SBA?
Yeah, if we turn to page 4 of 6.
406?
4 of 6, page, page 4.
Of your testimony. Okay, so this is Mr. Herrera's testimony. It's the agenda with his notes on it? All right, page 4, all right.
So I guess the question was, how would this interface or interact with a private lender? And I'll, I'll explain first for the SBA. Because the SBA, this letter that you have in front of you identifies that this was a foreclosed loan. And it appears, because I audited that 100 applicants at the land trust. So out of the 20 that were foreclosed, I found this document, which is the foreclosure document. So, right now, this document is saying that the, you know, LEC failed to pay the obligation. That's number one. Number two, the SBA and the US Treasury or the US Attorney may proceed to reclaim the 55,000 in this loan. Now, I guess the question you were asking, Speaker, is that how does a, an applicant that is given a 25% no, aggregate insurance, right? If they go to a private lender, is that the?
Or SBA?
I'm not sure with the private lender, but with the SBA, this would give us, this amount of 4 million can give us up to maybe 112 million aggregate based on the ratio that we approve on the 20%.
Right. But my question is, will SBA accept this ratio? As opposed to 50% or 90%?
Correct, yeah. And that was my first, during August, right? When we had this meeting and I first understood about the loan guarantee. When I did the research, SBA was not requiring a one-to-one or a 25% or a 20%. So Chapter 75A on page 23, the language that kind of regulated how to ensure the loan was, it just mentioned a reasonable amount to secure. What's reasonable amount? That was my problem. So I asked the attorney to break this language down because there was no percentage. And, and even today, the, out of the 100 applicants that were given SBA loan, SBA did not require a certain percentage. So it could be a basic note to say.
But what was the percentage that you guaranteed? 100%, right? CLTC in the past, did anyone answer that? Guaranteed what percentage on the SBA loans?
Yeah, you're right. I think it would be 100%.
100%.
Yes, it had to be.
Right. And we had the.
We're assuming, we're assuming it's 100.
And the CLTC had determined at that time that they had reasonable amounts to secure those loans, even though they didn't have the full amount. But because the statute also provided that we were securing those loans with a process in place that would allow them to shift quickly to the next person waiting who can take over this loan and take over that property.
Correct.
All of those have to be together and work together to appease SBA back then, I would think.
Yes, and if you go to page 3 of the 6 that I provided, on the line that said, "Total cash in the bank was 879", this total cash in the bank was 879,000. 879,000, and then $500,000 was restricted for the SBA. I mean, for the USDA, so we have 379,000 balance. So I was banking on using the 379 to provide a loan guarantee for the first six constituents. And the other two members at that time did not agree. And my logic on this one was that the last 100 constituents that were given SBA loan, they were given, they were given a no to, for a loan guarantee without the one-to-one ratio. Remember, we have 10.4 million aggregate, and we only had like 300,000 in, in the bank, so.
Right. And they did not object. So SBA did not object at that time, yeah.
That was my logic there, so.
So, okay, so I hear you, and I hear you, Acting Director. I guess, yeah, my concern is to, to put this language in statute versus if you're authorized to approve Guam Housing's up to 25% and you're comfortable doing that, you can proceed. And if we come up with any other solution for SBA, I don't want, I don't want them to lose out on that, that really low interest.
Yes, and in addition, if you go to page 6 of 6 on the last.
Yes.
Yeah. So on the last column, I did a, on a, the basic loan that was being approved by the SBA at this point in time was $240,000. So with the SBA, you're on that page now, Madam Speaker? Yeah. So the SBA at 2%, the monthly payment is $887 a month. Now, if we go to Guam Housing, that is charging 6% now, the constituent would be paying $1,400 a month. And with the USDA, the USDA Ruru Program, which is being worked on now, can go from 1% to not more than 3.875%. And during August, because of the constituents being, you know, they were living under the rain and under the weather, they, we were kind of saying, maybe they can go to Guam Housing. And Guam Housing was open to accept them. The only thing that was different here is that the amount for the monthly payment for those that were given $240,000 would be about maybe $500 per month. And to some of the constituents, that's, that's an enormous amount per month.
Yes. So, yeah, this is showing SBA at 2% versus Guam Housing at 6%. $887 a month versus $1,400 a month. That's why I'm concerned, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So, all right. So again, without the bill, you're able to do, up to, you, you decided as a commission to do up to 20%. This bill will make you go a little bit higher, 25% by up to, allowed to, right?
That was the agreement, yeah.
How about, how will you define, or how will you work with those words up to? Like one applicant versus the second applicant? Yeah. How are you going to decide that?
Well, I assume that we could go up to 25% and not over for each one of them. Of course, some may require less. I just Googled that thing on SBA loan guarantees, and it says that for specific loans, like their express ones, they require up to 50% or they provide up, and up to about 80% depending on the amount of borrowed. So I'm not sure if the 25% is going to cut it with SBA, but we will attempt to do so. That was my only concern. But of course, there's Guam Housing. The interest rate is higher, and that will be made available to them as far as we know it today. But we will continue to try to go over SBA and perhaps the other ones that Commissioner Herrera mentioned and see if they would buy into this. But yeah, that was my main concern, is the cap of 25%. But of course, if we raise that cap, then of course, it's going to limit the amount of people we can serve too. We've got to look at the balance between what we want to do. So at least this, this gives us guidance for now. And maybe if it doesn't work out, we have to come back and discuss this again. At least get us through the first ones. But like I said, they are, of, of the 27, 26 are attempting to get loans through the SBA.
Yeah. So that's urgent to me. You think you would be able to get an answer from SBA soon?
I was informed by the staff there that even before I arrived at the CLTC, that they were attempting to get a response. And as of today, we haven't received that.
All right. Okay. Again, what about the words up to? Does that allow you to treat one applicant different from the other? Like I'm going to guarantee you for 10% and the other one 25%? Do you think that that language is going to allow you to do that?
It would allow, but I don't think it would be right to do so. I think we should treat everybody equally.
All right. And yeah, I'm just curious. I, I would hope you come up with some factors to determine when it would vary. Maybe Mr. Camacho can help us with that. Like, when would you vary from 25% versus, or maybe, I guess, it would vary on what are the requirements of these people? If SBA requires 25, then you have to do 25. If GHC will require less, then you can go less, right?
The way I read the information.
20%, it sounds like Guam Housing is accepting 20%.
Yeah.
Is that right? 6%, no, the guarantee.
The guarantee.
20%, because that's what you guys approved. Is that right?
With the SBA, we configured 20% for SBA.
Oh, those were all SBA?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And there's one Guam Housing that was giving $320,000, and that kind of feedback.
Oh, yeah. There was one Guam Housing out of the 27. There was one Guam Housing applicant. And he was approved with $320,000. And we applied the 20%. Now, our controller's here, so we, we can do that breakdown. I'm not sure if they were issued the note already. But we kind of gave the 20% to the entire constituents that are, that were applying.
All right. Did you, did you receive the 1 million that we appropriated? And did you receive the 4 million from the governor already?
Yes, I was informed that it's in DOA already. It's already in our account.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I, I just got a simple question. The bill was, was drafted because you, you, you folks were doing one-to-one. Now you're saying you're doing 20%? And I'm trying to understand how you were allowed to do the 20% if the statute didn't allow you that. So, I mean, this bill is intended to give you up to 25%. If you've been allowed to 20%, then gosh, everybody should have gotten a loan. There shouldn't have been any excuse because 20% would have been a flat rate. The bill gave you five more, five more percent up. So I'm just trying to understand because that's why the bill was drafted, was because of the basis that when you guys were going to guarantee, you couldn't guarantee because you were caught between dollar-for-dollar when you needed some flexibility. And we're trying to give you flexibility. And if you're already doing 20%, then I'm just trying to question now, what authority did you have to do the 20% when you should have done it with everybody? And that means everybody that's been applying should have been good to go. Because 20% is less than the 25% I'm offering. I mean, I introduced in the bill. Then there, there shouldn't have been anybody restricted. And, and then, on the same token, if you're doing the 20%, I'm just going to ask the question, who were you getting green lights from to allow you to guarantee 20%? It's got to be SBA, and it's got to be USDA. It's got to be, it's got to be all the lending institution that allowed you. And if they did, then 25 is good unless you're going to tell me, wow, maybe we need to go to 50%. Remember, every time you raise it, your amount availability is less. So I was just trying to get you past the threshold of the one-to-one so you can reach as many as possible. I, I'm just curious.
Well, we're waiting.
Maybe you can explain that more, John, so we can understand that. Because if, if you don't need the 25%, you have the authority in 20%, then please show us on the statue how you got the authority. Because that's what I'm trying to do, is give you the authority. If you said 25 is not enough, you want to be 30, then, then we'll amend it. But please be able to come back because you don't have the, the, the details from SBA and find out truly, not, not, not what's on Google because on Google, that's the general public looking it up. You know, John, you can talk to Mr. Lawan and find out what are they willing to do? If they say 20%, we can live with, we can work with, then let the Speaker know because it's in our committee. And we'll work it so that when it gets to the floor, we can introduce, or she can amend the bill[1738.38] the bill to allow you the flexibility because it's, it's about taking care of the people. It's not about anything else. I don't put nothing in my pocket on this. This is helping everybody and that's all we need to do. Okay, John?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. But, but we're, the staff has been working on it even before I arrived at the CLTC and hopefully we can get, uh, a response to that soon. What we've gotten or like I said, is from Guam Housing at this point. And, uh, if they don't, if SBA won't, uh, uh, qualify this or won't approve, uh, we'll just channel them towards that institution. You know, of course, the interest rate will be higher. We're aware of that. But at least it is help. And that's what I'm saying is, uh, this is a work in the right direction. At least it clarifies it for us at this point.
Yeah. And then the same token, I, I know you guys can work with tomorrow Guam Housing and say, hey, reduce funny zoom rate because it's for the Tomorrow's. It's not just for anybody getting a Guam Housing. There's a, you, you remember how Tomorrowland Trust is a different group of people? They're not, they're common people that are out there saying, I can't get a regular commercial loan, but SBA can you give me because everybody else are, are denying me. That's, that's what Guam Housing is for. It's, this is not a, this is not a Tomorrowland Trust thing. Otherwise, we'll help you create your own funding institution, you know, and let you do it. But that's not the goal. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, can we, can you also please, uh, so, um, on the fiscal note, it says that, uh, information was not provided. So I'm going to ask you formally to just provide, provide again, an updated list of the number of families holding leases or licenses issued under seventy-five A one oh seven, the aggregate amount of building costs and their respective loan amounts. Uh, just that. Okay? The Senator, uh, Mr. Camacho and then the Senators.
Again, from the outside in, if you don't mind, I, um, I think, uh, when I, when I saw the up to, just again, just for clarity, when Commissioner Herrera said there was five hundred thousand restrictive fund, in two thousand and five, if you guys will recall, that five hundred thousand was set aside for the USDA Guarantee Program. Now that five hundred thousand doesn't have a dollar-for-dollar ratio. That's to show the government, I, I think there's a present legislation you guys are still holding for Guam Housing to do something similar. Uh, USDA only needs five hundred thousand so they can open their loan portfolio. Uh, and the example they gave at the, again, the presentation at Tomorrowland Trust, they did at the Marshall Islands and the other islands, is they did the same thing, five hundred thousand, and so far they gave close to ten million of loan portfolio. That's not a dollar-for-dollar match, that's a point zero zero five percent match. So it's just in government faith. The beauty about Tomorrowland Trust, there are called the successor safeguards, called the foreclosure proceedings. And now maybe this is where they have to harden their, their process. So typically, when you look at that, when you look at that, when Mr. and Mrs. John Cruz, for example, forecloses the nineteen, um, I know Mr. Herrera, I heard, and again, in, in another meeting, he visited these families. A lot of them hasn't, they may got their recorded foreclosure from US, I mean, from, uh, SBA, but, uh, they never got removed or they never used a successor proceedings based on chapter seven of A that it goes to the next qualified Tomorrowland Trust recipient. That's the safeguard. That's the safeguard that I know USDA uses, that in the event they foreclose, they got over eight thousand people on the waitlist that can go and get, uh, they can qualify to get the home again. But hopefully, the families that get it will go through the homeowner's education and try to do the best they can. But you know, nineteen out of a hundred, I'm not going to say that's, well, hopefully it was a perfect world, but it's not bad. We never know what happened to the nineteen. We have to check why they foreclosed. Maybe, maybe they lost their job, maybe something. But there is a safeguard proceeding called the, the successorship. And I think that's how these lenders are using, okay, if we, if we foreclose, we give it to the next qualified person that meets our underwriting requirement and takes over, takes over the home. And that's what USDA uses as their, on their, I know they require a half a million dollar MOU, which they got, they still got the restrictive funds and I don't know what they're going to do with that yet, but you guys are doing another one for Guam Housing to do something similar for Tomorrowland Trust. But again, uh, yeah, Mr. Birch is right. We don't know what the ratios are. But SBA since the last twenty years, never came in to ask for a dollar-for-dollar. They did foreclose and they put a lien on the property and that's it. I'm not sure why they forgot about it, but maybe Tomorrowland Trust now will have to look at the nineteen and figure out how we could, they could resolve it before they get called in and, on the, on the amount they guaranteed.
I completely agree with you. And if you read the statute, it's, that was the vision, right?
Yeah.
That it was the process that was going to help them to secure. They never had a one-for-one match ever, but they were able to secure loans. They were able to guarantee loans because they were supposed to have a very good process in place. And so I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Senator Canata, uh, any questions for the panel? Good? Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly thank you to the panel that's here today. I, I don't have any issue in supporting this, but I also want to make sure how do we address the proper implementation of these programs? Because, you know, unfortunately, the land trust has had such a clouded history and misuse and abuse of land trust property. And I want to know that in moving forward with this, the process, you had mentioned that, uh, Carlos, that there had been some, a family that has defaulted on their loan. Do we know what the track record is? Because I understand the process. If, if, if you're not able to pay your loan and you're not able to meet your obligations and, you know, the next family in line should be eligible to come in and absorb that and, and transfer into the property. That is the hope. But how effectively that's being implemented and how effectively, um, you know, those that have these loans on the property are addressing, um, their payments? Where are we? Do you have any sense at all of that? Are you monitoring that progress at all?
Okay, Senator, I've been told that, um, yeah, we do have problems like that. In fact, there's more than one. But I've also been told that there's a, a time when CLTC, uh, you know, a family defaulted on their loan and CLTC paid off the loan and the family's still there. Are we to make them homeless by kicking them out? I mean, that's what the rules say, right? So that's one of the things I did ask the staff about. I said, what have we done in this case? And they said the family's still living in at home, but CLTC paid off the loan.
I think Mr. Herrera testified earlier.
I mean, so.
I, I can appreciate that, but I don't, that's not the process.
I know how the process is supposed to work.
And I do get concerned again. Um, you know, I neither am a recipient of land trust property. I mean, could I be eligible? I'm sure with my blood I could be, but I just want to ensure that people are responsible, no matter who or what you are. I mean, you're taking an asset that another Tomorrow family may never, ever, ever get a chance to have, who's just as entitled. You know, and as every generation goes on, we have more children, um, you know, that they may never have the opportunity. We have people still in line that still come up to me that says, I was in line in nineteen ninety-five, I'm already, you know, a grandparent and, you know, I, I want to wait for my lot. I want to be able to pass it on to my children and, and, you know, everything, nothing now. And we hear those stories over and over again. So when we don't have the, um, effective implementation of the regulations and the requirements, because I do notice human behavior, if people know that you're going to take action, most of them will fall in line. If they know you're going to do nothing, which has been the standard in most cases of the land trusts, then you continue to see the abuse. And there is and has been and continues to be flagrant abuse of individuals that have been able to receive land trust property, either residential or a god significant amount of agricultural lands that were intended for that purpose, unfortunately are not being used. People say they're growing junk cars and they're subleasing to other entities that they're not supposed to. They're not using it for the purpose that it was intended. And if the land trust itself does not do its equal and effective enforcement, because we don't want selective this, you get, oh, we pay your loan and you, oh, sorry, you got to move out of your house. I mean, I just think in all fairness, everybody should be treated equally. Uh, no special benefit for one and not for everybody and everybody else is left out. And I think that's the challenge, you know, Mr. Birch, for the time you have there, uh, is trying to ensure that these, because it doesn't give confidence. I mean, at one end, we want to help, but at the other end, if the recipients are not responsible, and I have no fear of saying, people say, oh, no, no, don't talk about those things. Sweep it under the rug. We don't talk about those things because that's our people. But many of our people are responsible and they also expect that if you're given this benefit, that many other Tomorrowls will never have the opportunity. And that's always been at the back of my mind. I spent a couple of years up at the university, working with the land trusts, going through these, uh, leases from commercial to agricultural, seeing inconsistent, uh, implementation and enforcement and constant abuse. Not everybody, but a good chunk of change. It's disturbing. And I think the land trust itself has to get past that sordid history, including abuse of employees in the land trusts and make sure that their families, their immediate families, either they get the beachfront property, either they get the nice lot up at Baragota Heights. We know when we hear about all that, right? I, how did that happen? What it has happened and we've seen those abuse. We remember who some of these players are. Um, and that doesn't give comfort. At one end, we're trying to help our people. At the other end, you have some that are abusing it that really cloud the water for everybody. So I mean, in moving forward, yes, I'm very supportive of this because I understand. I mean, I can appreciate wanting to own a home. I spent many years saving, you know, that, that feeling of, of having your own place that you've waited so long to get it. It's, it's a good, of course, house maintenance is another issue after that and ongoing cost of all that of ownership. But I can understand feeling a sense of your own place that's yours, that you can call home. But at the other end, um, you know, while we're here supporting these endeavors, we definitely would like to see enforcement by the land trust that's equal and fair, uh, and start cleaning up some of the misuse and abuse that we continue to see of this land trust property. Because like I said, I, I'm bothered that we will still have many Tomorrowls, uh, grandchildren, great-grandchildren have yet to be born that will never, ever get a chance, even though they're just as entitled, that their bloodline, and even though I know the court case, yes, we, we all know that. But the majority of this actually really is intended for those of Tomorrow descent, uh, to have access to this property. So I hope in your tenure, I know it's a challenging, um, expectation, but nevertheless, that's how it should be. And there should be fairness all along. I don't think one loan gets paid off and, oh, you get to stay for abusing the system and all the rest of you, sorry, you know, nineteen ninety-five forgotten and you still, you know, they still haven't even had a chance to have a lot identified that's surveyed that they can say, you know, this is my land trust lot. So I, I'm just relaying that. I don't have any questions. I'm just saying that, uh, you know, we support this, but at the same time, I think we'd like to see some compliance and enforcement and effective implementation of, of the land trust programs as intended.
I agree with you, Senator. A hundred percent.
Well, good luck to you. I hope we see that in the actual.
I'll need a lot of that. I'll need your support.
Execution of your duties in your, in your position.
I'll need your support for that. Hopefully, we can come up with something, maybe to legislate some of these things out, to clear up some of these issues with the leases. And that's one of the things that we're looking at now, to see how we can maybe rectify some of these. We won't be able to clean up all of it. And you're right, we may have to take a hard stand on some of these things. Um, I've been there now for about, uh, two weeks and I hit the ground running and I haven't had a break. So I realize how much it is.
Well, I, I hope you, I hope you stay there long enough. I mean, the tenure of, you know, it's not very long and unfortunately, as a result, we don't get that continuity that's needed.
I, I agree.
But like I said, my experience is once people know you're going to address enforcement, most people, most reasonable people will address compliance. And that's what we want them to work towards.
And I agree with you a hundred percent. It's that, uh, as soon as somebody, uh, I mean, coming from ancestral lands, I'm aware of many of the issues. But I do know that, uh, when people do get into the CLTC and they realize the issues there, as soon as they learn what the, the problems are, before you know it, uh, they're leaving. And we need continuity. I agree with you on that wholeheartedly.
Well, and, and your people need the support. I mean, you've had some that have been with you a long time and I know, I understand. I, I've spent many a day, uh, you know, sitting in the land trust office and working with the staff there and the issues and the challenges, but it's not insurmountable. It just takes the will to do it. When you get right down to it, it, it just takes that. Um, and like, I don't, I don't understand how anyone who has something that they have the opportunity to receive abuses it. I really don't. Because there's many other young Tomorrow families out there that are saving, that are sacrificing, uh, so that they can get an opportunity, you know, move out of mom and dad's house at some point and have their own place to call their own. And they're struggling to do that and others, it's handed to them and they abuse it and they misuse it. They sublease the property to others to make money off it. Uh, other, others that are not entitled to be using this land. They're not, they're not doing it for agricultural purposes. They haven't been raising anything for their own subsistence of their own families. It's very easy to go out there and do that. I don't even know that the inspections have been done since we did them fourteen or fifteen years ago. Uh, but that's what it takes. And I think that's the expectation because at one end, we're asked, yes, please continue to give and support. Uh, but I don't want to give and support if we're continuing to see the same problems. We want to see the issues cleaned up and the cloud removed so that our people all have confidence, including those that are recipients that are following the rules. It's always unfair, because so-and-so knows so-and-so, so-and-so is connected, eh? Nothing happens to them. Me, I, I try to do the right thing because I have my own conscience and I'm no further ahead. That person got that benefit? I'm still waiting here. We see it among our people. I mean, our people are not naive. They, they know what's going on. And until we have that consistency in enforcement at the land trust, we're going to continue to see the abuses. It's human nature, unfortunately. It's a sad statement because I, we don't want to speak badly of our own people. But, you know, I'm sorry, that's not the Tomorrow family I was raised in. I don't think my grandfather would look at me and say, Joanne, that's okay. I think he'd rein me in. You know, as, as our, as good parents and grandparents will to be responsible, to be respectful and value what you have. Don't take it for granted and don't abuse it. It's been given to you. It's like an inheritance. We don't work for it. But we should take pride and appreciation that we're fortunate that it's been given to us just by pure virtue of who our parents or grandparents were, through no effort of our own. More the reason we should be responsible. So I just continue to relay that because, you know, here we are all these years later and I don't feel that, you know, that we've moved things too much further down the road from where we were of getting out of those issues. So with that, thank you and thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I'd like to allow, uh, one of our commissioners, Mr. Earl Garrido, to, um, make some comment.
Good afternoon, Earl. Good afternoon, Senator Canata, Senator San Augustine, Senator Brown and the Speaker, Teresa Terlai. Uh, Senator Brown, I completely agree with you. Uh, when I was first nominated for this post, I didn't know how overwhelming it would be. But having sat with the commission for a year, we're trying our due diligence, earn our best to try and bring the commission out of the horrors of its past. Nobody's going to disagree that there was a lot of inequities in the past. But there comes a time where we have to say, this is where it ends and let's move forward for the benefit of the people of Guam. Uh, before I go, go on, I would like to commend all the staff at CLTC. They're doing a tremendous job. They know what they need to do and they're doing it as best they can, but our resources are limited, uh, for our staff. And also, I would also like to commend, uh, our new Acting Director. I hope we can have a very good working relationship. And I would like to hold an esteem, Miss, uh, Commissioner Herrera. He's very tireless in his effort in doing research. I mean, I don't have the energy he has. But you're very right. There are agricultural lots that are not being used for farming. Uh, there are, there are commercial lots that are behind or even have non-existence licenses. And right now, my opinion, or at least my perspective, is I want to target the big, uh, the big commercial accounts first to get them to be working for the CLTC instead of having their way with the CLTC. And, uh, I also want to push forward with our agenda, the, uh, the date and time for our applicants who have been waiting since nineteen ninety-five. I mean, when I first stepped in, in our time, my date and time, we were a number six. But then we had to tackle the, uh, situation with the racetrack and that took a lot of time and a lot of, uh, research. And again, I commend Mr. Herrera, Commissioner Herrera. He did a lot of the legwork. Uh, if you give us a chance and be a little bit patient, because we're not going to sit on our ass or sit on our thumbs and just wait for things to happen. We have, we have some things that we're targeting to try and make things better for not only the CLTC, but for the people of Guam. Now, I got away from our Bill one seventy-seven dash thirty-seven, but I would like to add to that just a little bit. Our, our tenants that have been harmed by typhoon Mawar, they've been coming in in our regular monthly meetings and initially, we didn't know what our obligation was for the, uh, loan guarantee. We didn't know if it was a one-to-one or, uh, seventy percent or whatever. But then in the, uh, in the verbiage, it says whatever the board feels is reasonable. So we did our, we did our, our, uh, our, uh, history check. And over the past twenty years, we came up to, uh, we found out that there was like eighteen percent that may have been delinquent. So we padded it a little and we said, maybe we can get by with twenty percent. So that's how that twenty percent number came up. Now, you guys are offering us up to twenty-five percent. you guys are offering us up to 25%. As far as I know, we were not going to have, we were not thinking of having favoritism by saying, we'll cover you for 20, and we'll cover you for 25, and we'll cover you for 10, or anything like that. It would have been straight across the board, 20%. And that, that again, was based on the default rates that we've experienced over the past 20 years. Senator Brown, I agree with you. We need to move. But right now, it's a slow process, because there's a lot of research that needs to be done. And we're only, we're only allowed X amount of times to meet per month. Now, we were supposed to have a, a meeting last week, I believe it was last week. But there was a failure in the part of one of the media to post our notice, so we had to cancel that. But had we met in that meeting, it would have been a meeting where no stipends would be given to the board, the commissioners. And we were willing to do that, because it was for the people of Guam. Now, there was mention made of Mr. Canata. Now, he is a, he is a lineman with GPA, and he's one of those big burly guys, because that's hard work, being, working on the line. And the guy came in with tears in his eyes, because his family and his kids are living out under a tarp. They refuse to leave the site because of the, of the handy neighbors. Well, they'll come and visit your place, and then they'll borrow and not return because you're not there. So he's, he forced himself and his family to stay on site, living under the tarp. And according to his words, he cannot entertain friends, he cannot have family over, because there's no place for them to sit down, or have dinner with him, or whatever it is, or just to socialize. And like I said, every time that person came in, he would leave with tears in his eyes, because he was desperate. So when we came up with a 20%, and then we got the help from you guys, as well as the governor, so that gave us, that gave us seed money. And we met a couple weeks ago in a, it wasn't a Board of Directors meeting, it was a special meeting specifically to address the loan guarantees. And we did, and we approved, I think, we heard 12, but we approved 10, I believe. Because 12, the, the, the last two have some quirks that had to be straightened out in their paperwork. So it was very productive. That night, we got out about 8:00 PM. Okay, it started at 1:00, we got out at 8:00. We had planned one, but like I said, one of the, the medias failed to give us our second hearing to make it an official board meeting. But we are, we are on track to hear the remaining of the Mawar victims in our upcoming regular board meeting. I believe there's 12 or 13. We do the best we can with what we can, with the limited time. And that's all I got to say. But please, give us time, because we're trying our best.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Garrido. But I also know that the land trust has the authority to enforce its mandates. And that's why you have your executive director, and you need your legal counsel. And even though you have limited staff, like I said, if people know you're going to take action, most of them will comply. But if they know you're not, yeah, you've got a few years to sit around, they will, and they do, continue to take advantage of the government. There's no if or but. We've seen this over and over again, including your commercial businesses. I mean, they are benefiting, you know, because the odds are, whenever you're going to get around to collect from me, maybe you do, so far, you really don't. And it continues to perpetuate the same problem. You don't have the revenue stream coming in to implement the things you need to do, to hire the staff and everything else. It's a constant cycle. And it can be broken, even with your limited resources. It has to have the will and the direction in place to do it, and just start taking action. Start identifying your key businesses, and start letting them know. This is your timeline, these are your legal requirements. If you don't address this, we're going to have you removed. You just need to do it. I mean, you need to look them straight in the eye and just do it. Because until you do, you're going to continue to see this abuse. And this is standard. This is not the exception to the rule. I used to think this stuff was only a few people are irresponsible to do this. Lot of people, if they're given the opportunity to get away with it, they will, and they do do it. And they certainly have done it repetitively with the land trust. There's no doubt. Look at the history, it's there. So until you make those decisions and put those enforcements in place, you will continue to see the abuse. And the longer you wait to collect, including from those commercial accounts, the harder it's going to be to collect that money at all. So you have the authority to do it. It's been done in the past. You just need to implement. That's why you got your director there every day. I don't expect you, as a commission member, to be there every day to do this, or stay in 10-hour meetings. But you've got to set that directive. You need your legal counsel in place, and your legal counsel can be writing up those notices very easily. Your few staff can go deliver it. And be ready to take action, because if you're not, if it's only a phone call away, and I get to call so-and-so and pull you guys off, then they will do that, too. We've seen that happen. But if you conduct yourself in the light of day, and there's consequences, if people divert from the mandate, then people will be a little more careful, and a little, a lot more responsible. But that, you need to, you need to just enforce. Don't wait to do it. Do it. Thank you. Again, I appreciate your, your input.
Well, that's why our first major piece of action was with the racetrack. That was, that was a very difficult thing to do. But we held together, we did the research, and as of our September meeting, the Guam Raceway conceded and turned the property back over to CLTC, because they were challenging their eviction.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Garrido, Commissioner Garrido, and thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Canata, just checking one more time, any questions for this panel? No, all right. Thank you so much. Before I allow the sponsor to close, I just want to summarize what I've learned. So we've approved eight out of, the commission has approved eight out of 12 applicant, or approved to guarantee, eight out of 12 guarantee applicants, based on 20% cap, a formula that the commission created, based on a 20% rate of default in the past. And so they're using 20% of the money that they have now. I'd like to see a report at your next meeting as to the process to replace a delinquent borrower, a delinquent tenant of yours, so that that's very clear, shorted, so that when you do go to SBA, it's clear to them as well, what your process is. And it's been five months, speaking of SBA, since the typhoon, right? That seems like a long time to me, these people that you described, crying. They've been crying in our offices. That's why we tried to put money into the fund. But it really is taking too long, I think, to get a solution on the SBA. That is very good for them, to get these SBA loans. And I would really like you to, to act on that. I think there have been some suggestions as how to do that. So I'd like to now ask the sponsor to close on the bill. Senator San Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to make very simple. If the commission has the authority to do 20%, then maybe you don't even need this bill. But I'd be very careful. Be very careful. All I'm going to say is, number one, if you, if you believe the law allowed you 20%, make sure of that. Because this bill was to give you 25%. You came in to support it. And I want to pursue that. But at the same time, take a look at the bill on page two, if you wanted the, the amount, for the aggregate amount of building costs, only up to 25% of the loan period. Maybe not even write down the word leasing or licensee. Take a look at it. Please advise the speaker in Sir Committee, so we can get this bill out as soon as possible. The sooner we can get it out, the sooner we can get it on the form, we can vote on it. Because exactly what Senator Brown and the Speaker mentioned, we just want to see compliance and move forward. Everybody wants to work with everybody. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you again to all of you who testified today on Bill 177. That will conclude the hearing on Bill 177-37. It is 3:20. We're moving on to our second agenda item. It is Bill Number 178-37COR. Again, I'll allow the sponsor to introduce the bill. If you could please read the title as well.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 178-37COR, introduced by myself, Senator San Augustine, co-sponsored by Senator Canata, Senator Senegal, Senator Will Parkinson, and I'd like to add section 75A1, A126, 75A127, 75A128, 75A129 to Chapter 75A of Title 21, Division 2, Guam Code Annotating, relative to establishing of the Chamoros Land Trust Endowment Fund. My colleagues and to the, the people of Guam listening, the mission of the Chamoros Land Trust is to protect and administer trust property for the benefit of the Chamoros people. The primary funding source of CLTC is through revenue generated by its rental properties and funding provided by the legislature. Whew, big word, rental properties. That being said, the funding received is neither steady nor permanent. Bill 178 establishes an endowment fund as a permanent funding source, utilizing the corpus to invest, at which the earnings of the endowment may be utilized to expand on the services with the corpus of the fund held in perpetuity. The bill would also allow for the fund to include the payment of accelerated rent as a term and condition of a commercial lease. Go after commercial people. The payment of accelerated rent is an opportunity to fund the corpus of the endowment fund, as the annual earnings from the accelerated rent, when invested, may equal or exceed the annual rent from the leasing, the lease that would have been received, had the payment of the rent had not been accelerated. For example, the initial amount of $7,500,000 with a 4% return on investment, and an annual contribution of $300,000 over 31-year growth period, the possible income that CLTC can receive for the fund would be approximately $16,950,000. This fund will allow the Chamoros Land Trust to commit to continuous mission, as it will help stabilize and ensure future funding. It will also help implement critical initiatives, such as surveying trust properties, registering unregistered trust properties, providing basic infrastructure to service trust properties, and guaranteeing home loans for qualified beneficiaries built on trust properties. Madam Speaker, thank you for hearing this bill, and it will, as it will stabilize and ensure funding for the Chamoros Land Trust Commission, I look forward to testimony or feedback that is provided today. Sisus Massey, ma'am.
Sisus Massey, Senator. So on Bill Number 178 now, I'd just like to recognize again my colleagues, so Senator San Augustine, sponsor of the bill, along with Senator Roy Canata. Also present is Senator Joanne Brown, the vice chair of our committee. So we will now hear testimony, all of you. All right. So please proceed, either Commissioner, Commissioners, and then the Director, Mr. Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My name is David Babalta Herrera, and I am here to support Bill Number 178-37COR. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Garrido?
Thank you, esteemed senators. I, too, am here in support of the Bill 178-37.
All right. Thank you, Sisus Massey. Director Birch, acting director of CLTC.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Senator San Augustine, Senator Canata, and Senator Brown. My name is John Birch. I'm the acting administrator, director of the Chamoros Land Trust Commission. My testimony is in support of the proposed amendment with specific concern for advocating revenues collected from accelerated rent into the endowment fund for the Chamoros Land Trust Commission. The Chamoros Land Trust Act was enacted in 1975 with a vital mission of safeguarding and managing trust properties for the welfare of the Chamoros people. The CLTC plays a significant role in implementing critical initiatives, such as surveying trust properties, registering unregistered trust properties, providing essential infrastructure to service trust properties, and guaranteeing home loans for qualified beneficiaries built on trust properties. The endowment funds are often associated with educational institutions, such as universities or colleges, where they're used to provide financial aid to students and support research and academic programs. However, they can be established by nonprofit organizations, hospitals, museums, and other entities, to provide long-term financial stability and support to their missions. However, I have reservations about the proposed amendment, which advocates for the inclusion of accelerated rent as a term and condition of commercial leases under the CLTC, because contributions to endowment funds are generally considered tax deductible. Endowment funds are typically created by making a substantial initial donation or bequest, although they can also be built over time through ongoing contributions. The goal is to preserve the principal amount of the fund while generating income from the investments that can be used to fulfill the fund's purpose. The proposed amendment outlines the governance and management of the COT endowment fund. It suggests establishing the fund as a separate entity to be administered by the CLTC as the trustee. The corpus of the fund will be invested by the CLTC, with the earnings dedicated exclusively to the operations and activities of the trust. The amendment further ensures transparency and accountability by mandating annual audits and the submission of an annual report to the Governor Guam and the Speaker of the Guam Legislature regarding the administration and activities of the fund. Moreover, the proposed amendment includes provisions for the investment of funds and the engagement of custodians and investment agents. These measures are crucial for responsible and prudent management of the endowment fund. The amendment sets criteria for custodians and investment agents, ensuring their qualifications, experience, and compliance with relevant laws and regulations. The inclusion of these provisions strengthened oversight and governance of the fund, further safeguarding the interests of the Chamoros Land Trust and its beneficiaries. In conclusion, I support the proposed amendment, which aims to establish an endowment fund for the Chamoros Land Trust Commission. Thank you for your time and attention, this matter. I'll be grateful for the opportunity to discuss it further as needed. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Acting Director Birch. Mr. Laguanya?
Avare talo, senators. Si Ronald Laguanya zu, da usupotisti na laipri ni poni unu sheti otso, chwen te sheti. Lontes dezu na babe kontinua, ini nistetigu gini. Za wa na babe menti Speaker, aminas, Senator, dinancho. Motu tinya, Mr. Birch, put for board. Uwate ndi utumu na hunta gi tresi mona totti. Za magai man maulik estesha na membru liya si Earl, za si Dave gi, ane duru ma lii aprikanti ne man ono mona re. Masosona na guagi tres, atkiletnya, tres, un taota ha, da tres. Nekofta ma anu no. Pesh masoda ne, za man asua. Ben lekwezgi magai ma aatan, ma pupulan, za mana dinadanti. Ombez guawa anyo atendi zu, ahonganga zu, anyo lizu leku da lai tres edzu. Pesh gua unu talu komike lu molan zu, ni taza lancho nya. Aga sa masosona mona i ilinachi. Za dinancho nisisita, omana dinanchi zu, Mr. Birch, put for board. Nisita taspiyadu xani man lalansu ni, lansun taza. Edzigi, za magai motu di, angi masoda ne no, debidia mana para. Za ma tuli ji, pumalu na okrias, zo fa ma pati huzung yadu xani man perfektu man lalansu. Sa sosono zu gi lu monsu, za gu malu. Za anyu lili eno xha, ti man tsamuru eno xha ni man lalansu. Lo kalan taza ma lagu pumatsa ne zu, sa delekao ne. Ntunga lo nisisita, omu mapulisia no xha, za ma regla. Lo kalan taza ma lagu pumatsa. Staba si difuntu, si pidutelahi na gi za gu mogotigu, lo mahput ne, sa ntunga esti politika. Lo cho gi magai re dinanchi. Lo gaigi si celuta Dave gi, za si Earl, za nipumalu na membru xha, man maulik, za loki si Joey, za ni ta taonya gi land trust, man maulik eno xha. Mas pipya, impeni pumatso gi dinanchi. Za edzigi na gaigi loki gi staba u gi babe atana, zo pulan, anyo lizu leku maulik beda mimizu, arregla i ilinachi. Put for board, na para no. Pesh gaigi loki para usupotisti i, esti endowment sa, hanisita i. Pesh gaigi loki para usapotisti i, esti endowment sa, hanisita is CLTC salapi. Za ezuna salapi na ma rikohi nei, omapega gi ombandan zo guaha para usunia, para irreglunia, ma xha hafa ma nisisita, para ma survey, para hafa xha ma nisita. Maulik esti endowment foundations za ma stadung gini anyo taite. Gaigi klaru todudu irreglementonya, na ta'za si nya sti pumacha, sin omapreba ni board. Lo hua preba, zo sapotisti endowment foundation, za hua preba loki si Director John Birch, sa mana hami gi ancestral lands, za maulik sa pupulan, za gawa loki upupulan gi. Upupulan na siguru, na ta'za kutzinadas gi. Ezigi, ta estigi xha na ta'nu, i land trust na ta'nu, za ancestral lands ta protehi eno xha na ta'nu. Ezuna ta'nu, ta'nu man tsamoru, i ta'nu para imanuri, na na duenu. Za zangian na hafa, nisita ta cho gi di nanchi, za ni maulik. Ezwa, za Sisus Masi, Senator Brown, ne on menti noh, sa pa gawa hu hungu kennoh. Lo gawa ulili, lo nisisita ma saongan, za nisita ma regla. Za munga man o'na, saongan u dung, za ma hungu ni taotoha pa gua guaha gi. Sa besa nga nya, magai ulii ha zixha ganoh man lalansu, za ti man tsamoru, ti man lalansu zixha. Guaha loki komeki man lansugi, lo pidi sita kontrajit, sen dongkulu na ta'nu. Na nisita ma mapattinti au eno. Pesh Sisus Masi, zo sapotisti endowment foundation.
Sisus Masi. Mr. Camacho.
Speaker, Senator, Senator Brown, Senator Canata. Again, on the gist of this one, this was being created, I've always liked to listen to different hearings, but Mr. Birch hasn't talked about some silver linings he's done within ancestral lands commission. He took some of their hard money and invested it through the statute, through his really sort of GITA, and I think they got a 5% to 8%, I think, Mr. Birch, you mentioned that, 5% to 8% return. So, one of the formula that Senator San Augustin mentioned, imagine if someone net present values a cash flow, 7.5, which is locked box and protected. And when we did this presentation to Mrs. Mr. Garrido and Herrera, I was using a conservative 4% return. I didn't know they were going to get a 5% to 8%, 4% return. And the cash flow from the 4% return is at the discretion of the board to use as, my gentleman to my right has stated, for the use of the mission of the Chamor Land Trust, for sustainable cash flow. So, on one hand, there'll be the cash flow sitting on the endowment fund, and yes, Mr. Birch is right, this was, this is used as many vehicles for the colleges and all that, but we're using this to protect the fund. As you guys all know, historically in Chamor Land Trust, there are still some pending litigation. There are people who say you owe us millions of dollars. And one of the way to block and lock this fund is to put it through an endowment, so it can't be raided, not raided by the governor or legislature, raided by any other people saying, and I'm not going to mention it because there was a case saying you guys owe us $5.8 million. Chamor Land Trust said, I don't have the money to pay that at this point. But previous boards in the past approved it to pay them. So, if this, if this money comes available in other sources and is left unblocked, then they can have the access to get that money. But if you put in endowment for the purpose of reinvesting it for the, for the mission and goal, I'm not a lawyer, but maybe you guys, the legislature can verify this, hopefully nobody can touch that money, but the sustainable cash flow can be used for its operation. So, that's all, it's just, we got case studies and success stories. Mr. Birch got a 5% to 8% return on ancestral lands commission's funds, and that's a sustainable cash flow for that organization. Why not take that successful formula, and that's what this was born, and apply to Chamor Land Trust so they can have some sustainable cash flow? It don't matter where the funds is coming from, but it's just an idea if someone wants to net present value their cash flow to help this endeavor. But at the end of the day, that has to be approved by the Board of Commission, and on another legislation that you will see, which we can't talk about today, it will be through a third-party independent appraiser to verify those net present value. But that's just one formula that I think can provide sustainable cash flow to help their mission and goal, to fulfill the operation of Chamor Land Trust on one component. And again, I'm glad, it's so ironic that Mr. Birch has ran one organization getting a 5% to 8% return, so if he sells this to his, the other commission, he has a case study to show that he's done it at that rate. And I'm not sure if he's willing to say how he got it at 5% to 8%, but again, we were just using a conservative of 4%. So, I just, I just support the, the idea of endowment to protect the funds for sustainable resources for Chamor Land Trust. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Camacho. I just want to note, the fiscal note on the bill says that they sent a request to CLTC on October 3rd, follow-up on October 6th, has not received any official comments as of the date of this fiscal note, absent any information from CLTC such as the number of commercial tenants able to pay accelerated rent, the amount of which commercial tenants intend to pay, or how the CLTC plans to manage its investments, the Bureau is unable to determine and estimate the impact at this time. And I'll allow the sponsors to begin with questions for the panel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Very simple, and just to put Mr. Birch's reservation in place, yeah, normally you're right, endowment funds are normally true donation. Coincidentally, what's going to support this fund is what you get. And if you can convince everybody in the commercial industry, they got to pay in advance, they can't just pay me on a monthly basis and then default? No, you got to pay in advance. Sorry, you're here for the long haul, or you need to pay us in advance so that you folks can do what you need to do. It also protects the fund. Nobody will be able to grab at it, because why? It's an, it's an endowment fund. You guys control it. You determine its fate, nobody else does. We won't be able to touch it, neither will the governor. So, if anybody else wants to touch it, we're just going to look at you folks and say, "Hafa Ron, hafa Dave," and then you probably go, "It's happening." But you know what? This is all it's for. This is for you guys. This is to help you and protect the money you got, because in the past, money was taken, and I don't think it's ever been returned. Sisus Masi, tumu, but it's just protect the fund, protect Chamor Land Trust fund. That's what my, the goal is for this. And maybe you can convince, all your commercial lease, they got to pay in advance, couple of years in advance, maybe even throughout their loan or their lease. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Just wanted to see. I have a couple of questions as well. So, I note your concern that, so, the acting director's concern is reservations about the proposed amendment, which advocates for inclusion of accelerated rent as a determined condition of commercial leases because contributions to endowment funds are generally tax deductible. Have you had any discussions with anyone that suggests that this, because of the tax deduction, that this kind of, this will not be allowed?
I'm hoping that it's not allowed as a tax deductible. I haven't had time because I just received notice of the public hearing on this just last Friday, and so I didn't have time to go through the tax laws and see if there, if it would be allowed so. But normally rents or anything like that are not tax deductible. My concern is that much of the money that is placed into endowment funds normally would be, and that's what I'm trying to explain, is I'm hoping that the law doesn't change or doesn't allow rent money to be considered a tax deductible, because if, for example, we were to have commercial leases out there and we were able to get accelerated rents, and if the tenant pays into it, then they get a tax break for that, I don't think that that would be right. So, that's my major concern with that. The other one is that, yes, I did and I am currently earning over 5% returns on our investments. We spread them out throughout various banks throughout the US using some investment managers, and we're, depending on which investment, which bank it's in, it varies from 5% to 8%. I plan to bring that investment policy statement and promote it or propose it to the CLTC board, the Board of Ancestral Lands. We went through almost a whole year preparing this statement, but now that I have a template and it works in one agency, I don't see why not it can't work for CLTC. But it was up to the board to determine what type of investments, and once we decided on, on the risk, and of course, the time, the length of the investments to be placed in these risky investments out there, or whether it be CDs or cash equivalents or whatever it might be, once we got the agreement on that, then we started. And so far, yes, we've been earning pretty well on it. It's a matter of setting up the investment policy statement, and we can get that done. It could work for an endowment fund too, to make sure that that's the way that funds in the endowment fund are, are invested. So, it would be nice to have something that would be locked like the land bank, but not locked entirely, because sometimes the Chamor Land Trust Commission would need to pull money out for various reasons, sometimes to, like right now, for loan guarantees and such. So, endowment fund itself in general is a great idea. I wouldn't mind a CLTC having by law an endowment fund. It's just advocating or mandating any lease revenues being placed in it and not giving the commissioners the opportunity to decide that, what, what monies go in. That's my concern. You know, right now, we have the flexibility, and you're right, sometimes funds are taken out, and they probably have been. I haven't been able to verify any of that in my short time there, but I know that that's not the case with the ancestral lands commission. The money goes in there, it is locked, but the commissioners do have the opportunity, if they want, for various projects to pull out the principal. They have chosen not to do so as of today. And with the investments, it kind of locks it a little bit further, because now they're in, they have a timeline of how long these investments will, will be invested in the various shares and/or stocks or CDs or other cash equivalents. And that's what I want to bring to the CLTC. I know it'll work there too, if given the chance. I mean, I just stepped in the door the other day, and they have yet to even hear about this. It's probably the first time they're hearing it.
That's my next question. Was this ever discussed in one of your meetings? Board meetings? Any of you commissioners discuss this at a board meeting? No? No?
No. They, they, they don't know what I've done with the other, in the other agency as yet.
All right. Okay, so, maybe we could separate the, the elements. So, one is accelerated rent, right? The authority to ask for accelerated rent. Second is where to put that money as ancestral lands is putting it in a certain kind of fund. This suggests a, and then the third would be this suggested, it's to put it specifically in.
An endowment fund.
Endowment fund, yeah. So, maybe, maybe we can separate that, like allow an endowment fund for the contributions, donations from the community versus the accelerated rent goes into a different type of fund. So, it's not called an endowment fund, but it's also locked. I am very concerned about the locked provision because it, money was raided from the Chamor Land Trust in past years. We tried in this most recent budget with the help of my colleagues to restore a little bit of that, but that's really always the critical issue. So, no matter our language, they control the accounts, and that's, that's the difference. So, we need maybe to fix that as well.
Yes.
All right, the, that's it. Those are all my questions. Senator Canata, any questions? Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I do want to ask, and I appreciate, you know, Mr. Birch, you just, you just started, and I know there's a lot of groundwork to, to, to work on and catch up and facilitate with your board, but the accelerated rent provision, I mean, if we were to put this in place and the commercial leases were not open to it or did not have the financial resources to advance this additional cost, I mean, what do you think the impacts would be? And then, what do you think the ability would be of you to actually implement this when the land trust is already challenged, or trying to even collect the regular rent that's due to the land trust?
At this time, I don't know if any tenant, whether it be at CLTC or ancestral lands, that can or would agree to accelerated payment of their rents. I don't know if there's anybody out there that's capable of doing that at this point, you know, in our economy. Many people are just trying to survive. Many businesses are just reopening if they have survived, you know, this last pandemic. So, if we find a tenant that, I mean, that can do that, but I, you know, the CLTC is in need of funds, just like other government agencies, I like our board to be able to access that, and if possible, make that decision of where to deposit these funds, for it not to be mandated, but to allow them to make that decision. You know, not just say, "All the funds you collect will go into a lockbox and be locked up, then you're going to earn money," or whatever you can use to be based on, on the interest income that, that you've earned on it. Because even if you do place in there millions of dollars, depending, 10 million or so, you may be able to get like, I don't know, 300,000 or more annually out of it in interest income. For a single person or two, maybe, but for an agency that oversees hundreds, thousands of people out there that we're trying to help, that might be a bit difficult for the board, whether it's this board, and I know our board is new, the members we have are new, whether it's this board or any future board, I don't want to tie their hands. But then again, you're right, we, we have to make sure that the funds we have can't be raided like it has been.
So, if this provision is left in here, what, what would you do?
If it's left where we make the decision whether or not to include it in the lease, then that means that that will be okay. But if it's mandated that it be part of every commercial lease that we create, or any commercial lease that will be renewed, then that would be problematic. It, it would be a problem for the agency.
So, you think you have the opportunity of losing any commercial, potential commercial clients as a result of this requirement?
I don't think so, because if you place it in a lease, then accelerated payments would probably be, the way I see it, will be an option that they could exercise by accelerating their payments. Some of them may not be able to do that, but if they do pay accelerated payments, then that would go into this lockbox of an endowment fund. Not just a regular endowment fund, it'd be more so than that.
Well, I'm just asking, is it something that you can live with or not? Would you prefer it or not? I mean, you've already relayed you would not prefer it.
I would not prefer that.
Can you live with it? I mean, I, you know.
I would not, I don't.
I don't have a heartache not including it, but it's included with the sponsors' bill, that's why I'm asking.
Right. I wouldn't want it to be mandated to be placed in there, that any funds placed in the endowment fund should be, the decision should be made by the board itself at the time, and if they want to do it, I agree that they should be allowed to, not that it should be mandated by the legislature. It should be administrative decision.
So, do you want, support this bill or not?
We support the bill as far as an endowment fund, but our concern is with placing and making a part of any of our commercial leases, the accelerated payments.
I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to you, Mr. Leguany, and I, I'm with you with regards to the concerns you've relayed, because some of these things, you know, we can see them with our own eyes, they're very clear, they're in our face literally, and some people are very, you know, they're banadosa with it, they have no shame. You know, there's a lot of our Chamor phrases, now that I'm getting older, I really appreciate it, because some truth to it, there's some things in the Chamor language that, you know, it's so direct and hits home, the words, the so few words have so much meaning, and we know why now as we get older, why those phrases exist. But this is something that we should be prideful about. You know, there's so much potential, and Carlos, you know, with all the work that you've done over the years in, in providing the opportunity for many of our people to have homes to live in, to be able to rent, to be able to raise their families, but this, you know, this cloud should not exist, this is something we should be prideful about, something we should be boasting about. And it troubles me, you know, I have often talked to my mother about it, because I go, "This is not the Chamor family I was raised in." And yet, I see it more and more than I ever have, because before, you know, you don't bring shame on your family, that's one of the things you're taught very early on in the game, and nowadays, it doesn't matter. So, I appreciate your comments. I hope the land trust does, you know, start to effectively implement these legal requirements and start enforcing your requirements. and start enforcing your requirements, because I think as you move forward with that, there'll be a lot more confidence of our people in the implementation of the program and a lot more fairness. I don't like the standing in line to benefit when you haven't earned it. I don't have a problem if you've earned it. More power to you. But when you lie still and cheat to get it, when you abuse the system and you abuse your own people, your own family, even among ourselves, our own family's being abused, it just, you know, it's not acceptable. I don't think we should be supporting that. So I appreciate your comments. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions and comment with regards to this bill.
Thank you, Senator. I'd allow the sponsor to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I can agree to a certain extent to separate the endowment fund. Let the board decide. But you need to remember how this bill was created. It was, actually, it was a partner with another bill. That's why it was created, because to make sure that that money doesn't go anywhere, and that that group was going to pay and accelerate it. Are there any, are there any businesses out there with leases with Tomorrowland Trust that are behind? Because I'm trying to understand, why would they be behind when they got the best deal in the world? And if they are behind, it's shame on us for not policing that. So with that, I have no problem if we make the endowment fund separate. Bakoma matsuli salapemu talu, cha mun bibiro magi za na lukzo azuda zhu, sa besanano, i opportunity is today, not tomorrow. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator San Augustine. All right. And thank you again to the panel for testifying on bill 178. There being no further testimony, the committee will consider this bill duly heard. The time is now 3:50 PM. Sisus Masi.